Thank you. I'm recommitting to open session, the regular meeting of the Fairview District 72 Board of Education. It is April 26, 2023 at 7:03. We have already established that we have a quorum, so can I ask the members of the public and everyone at the table to silence your cell phones and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, undivisible, indivisible. Thank you. Okay, first item of business this evening is to approve the regular enclosed minutes of a meeting minutes of March 22, 2023. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
I'll second.
Are there any corrections or comments regarding the minutes? There were a couple of small typos, I noticed, but I think they've been amended, so we're good. In that case, any opposed, any in favor say, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Sorry, I haven't done this much. Next item is to approve the payment of bills. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the payment of the bills in the amount of $950,119.81?
So moved.
I'll second. Are there any questions regarding the bills? Okay, in that case, for the secretary, please call the roll call votes.
Yes, Ms. Spoojie.
Yes.
Ms. Brown.
Yes.
Ms. Diakakis.
Yes.
Ms. Downing, Mr. Gulliana.
Yes.
Ms. Lenoir.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Okay, the bills, bills are approved to be paid. Next item is PTA. Do we have a representative from PTA tonight? Excellent.
Good evening, everyone. It's hard to believe that we are 44 days away from the last day of school. It has been, PT has been busy with school events to make the school year a memorable one. Today, we hosted the Support Stop Breakfast, and they had a wonderful time, and they had raffles to win. Teacher's Appreciation Lunch is held on April 28, this Friday. The Virtual PTA Book Fair is going on at ends this Friday. Teacher's Appreciation Week is from May 1st to May 5th. May 1st, we had the PTA Dangio fundraiser, all-day event. May 3rd, we had the PTA General Meeting. And May 12th, we had the Multicultural Night, which is less than three weeks away from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. in the picture. Thank you.
Just as busy as ever. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is School Activity Report. Does anybody from the board or administration have good news to share from the district?
Yeah, I can go ahead. Good evening, and share that last week, we hosted students from Niles West who are in an early childhood program. Three of the five were alumni of Fairview, and they came back to shadow their teachers from when they were in third grade and fourth grade and middle school as well. So it was a great opportunity to host students that are pursuing a career in the education world, whether it be as a classroom teacher or speech pathologist. They really enjoyed their time here, and our teachers were wonderful hosts and loved having them back. It was great to see them reconnect with one another. And then also last week, Mr. Connor, Ms. Tony, and Mrs. Shadrav hosted a wonderful spin-out presentation. And we had many community members present, hopefully received it in the digital backpack, but I just wanted to give a big shout out to that group for preparing such a thorough presentation and to teach our community even more a lot about what our spin-out program is.
All right, as you all know, April, May, and schools are quite busy, so we'll try to keep it somewhat short. Recently, a group of middle school students went to Niles West for a township math tournament. So Mrs. Shadrav brought a group over to the high school, and we are happy to report that Fairview was first overall, first place overall. That's great. Yeah. We actually, eighth grader Casey Embers, they were first place in every event, which was great. And then we have our math tournament for our middle school students that is taking place next week, an in-house math tournament, which kids are really excited about. We also had Operation Snowflake take place on Friday, just to shout out to PTA because they helped sponsor the event. Operation Snowflake is for our seventh grade students. It's a day-long program here in school where the seventh graders spend time together with some eighth-grade mentors and some facilitators, some teachers, just talking about building relationships, making connections, really setting the stage for them to kind of become the leaders of the building. So it's a really cool experience with some team building. Imagination Theater is a community theater group that does presentations for kids, some improv comedy and theater, which is really cool. Kids get to participate on stage, so that took place last Friday. I believe that's it for me, so thank you.
Sorry, I am excited to announce that our Student Equity Advisory Committee has almost made one full school year as we're wrapping up the year. So we are open applications this Monday, actually, for new members to apply for our next 2023-2024 school year. So that's for current sixth and seventh grade students, who of course will be seventh and eighth grade students next year. So we're losing some of our eighth graders, which we're really sad about, but they've done great work. So we are excited to open up applications in hopes that we get new students for next year. So we have been working on that. We are also preparing for our presentation with Dr. Whitaker and Mr. Lopaca, which students are a little nervous, but at the same time still excited. They've done a lot of great work this year, so I'm excited for them to have an opportunity to share that. And then starting next week, which is the 1st of May, we will be wrapping up our primary equity reading circles for our K through fourth grade students with me pushing into classrooms. So that's it for now.
Hello. One of the things that recently happened is that we were able to bring back the STEM night, which was a huge, huge success. And a major thank you to all the people that helped with that, but especially Mr. Leys. He did all the planning, organizing, and it was an amazing night. So if you did get to come out there, I hope you enjoyed it. And that's it.
Thanks very much. Anybody from the board, anything to add? Your experiences of the last month? Good. Next item is Administrative Reports, and our first presentation this evening is from the Math Curriculum Team Proposal.
Yes, over the past year, our curriculum team focused on math has taken the time to really review our current math curriculum. We've had the curriculum for quite a number of years, so it was time to, to review and to look at what new programs are out there, how we might better serve our student population. So Colleen Larkin, our primary principal, facilitated this wonderful team of teachers and staff. So Colleen is going to walk the board through the proposal, which you should have on your Chromebooks so that you can view it there. It'll be also up on the screen. But I just want to start out by thanking Colleen for her leadership. This has been a heavy lift. Math is, as you all know, a very important curriculum and one that we've been focusing on for a couple of years now, really looking to help boost our students' achievement in that curricular area. So we're really excited for the board to hear the proposal tonight and happy to answer any questions once Colleen is through with her presentation.
Good evening. Thank you so much. As Dr. Whitaker said, we're really excited to be bringing forth this proposal to the board this evening. I would first like to introduce, I'm joined by some colleagues behind me, five members of our district math learning team that have so generously volunteered to be here this evening. So Allison Schlatter, one of our kindergarten teachers, you'll be hearing from each of them in a few minutes. Allison Meyer, first-grade teacher, Lisa Hilgendorf, third-grade teacher, Lauren Staten is our math interventionist, and Rebecca Hoffman, instructional coach. So you'll get a chance to hear from them in a few minutes, but I'm grateful that they're here this evening so they can really bring their voices through in this proposal as well. They were really instrumental in this process. So I'll walk you through what our process looked like. So the recommendation that we are proposing tonight is for kindergarten through eighth-grade adoption for Eureka Math Squared, which is through Great Minds Publishing Company. When we began this process, it was back in September, and each time we begin a district learning team, we seek input from our staff members on who would like to be part of the process. When we did that in September, we had many faculty members volunteer. We asked for a grade-level representative from each of our kindergarten through fourth-grade teams. We also find it's important to have representatives from our English Language Learner Department, our Instructional Coach Department, as well as our Special Education Department, our middle school teachers as well, and our Special Education and Interventionists, along with a representative from Spin Out. So that ended up being 17 members total. And previously, the board has heard from us that we have partnered with Kristin Clegg. She is an outside math consultant, and after COVID hit, we really knew we needed to have, have our teachers work with someone who was an expert in the math area to help us identify, A, how we're going to help combat some learning loss, and then help us to identify what are the major clusters that our teachers should be focusing on each year after COVID to really hit home, what are going to, where we are going to hit our students' standards that should be covered. So with that partnership, we decided to reach out to Kristin again to help us lead this district learning team. She agreed to it, and so when we partnered with her, we met with her prior to kicking off our DLT. She helped to narrow down a few different curriculums. You'll see them here listed on the second page in your proposal. So she brought to us curriculums that currently meet all of the math standards. And a few of them, they were Bridges, kindergarten through fifth grade, Carnegie, sixth through eighth grade, CMP, the Connected Math Project, which is what our teachers currently use in sixth through eighth grade, a Eureka Math Squared and illustrative. So we had a nice variety of both kindergarten through eighth-grade programs, which is unique, along with those that cover K5 or 6, 8. After we established the curriculums that we wanted to bring to the team, you'll see there were eight times throughout the year that our team met, two of which were full staff institute days. Through each of these times, the dates were broken down where we were able to bring in publishing companies, where the teams K5, 6, 8 were able to hear presentations from the publishing companies, ask questions, learn about the program. And a really instrumental piece in this process was the toolkit that Kristin has created. And this toolkit helped our teachers to analyze each of the math curriculums you see listed there to take a deep look at the math standards and the math practices. So it took out the subjectivity of, you know, the bells and whistles of each of those curriculums and really focused on the content and the standards and the practices, which are the most important pieces of when you're looking at a math curriculum. So through that process, after the toolkit was used with each of those curriculums, we had narrowed it down to one four-year curriculum adoption through Great Minds, Eureka Math Squared for grades K8. I am going to bring up our team behind me, so you can hear from them on why they feel and why the team feels that this is the best recommendation for all of our kindergarten through eighth-grade students here at Fairview at this time. So team, welcome you all.
Hello. Thank you for having us. So we're just going to share some of the highlights that we found about this program. So one thing that we really enjoyed about this curriculum is that it does a great job at suggesting different accommodations and modifications for English language learners that are going to support their regular and active participation in learning mathematics. So the lessons will include different word list videos that really make learning accessible for all students, no matter what their linguistic ability. That also provides activity directions and prompts that also include visuals that help support understanding for those students that are English language learners, but also for our youngest students who are still getting to know their reading skills, so they can actually read directions themselves, which is nice. We also liked that the program provides both individual and collective opportunities for students to learn using mathematical tasks with a range of different challenges for them.
All right. Another highlight of the program that we really loved is that there's so many opportunities for discussions. So students are focused on really highlighting the what and the how of the math that they're working on. And these discussions can promote critical thinking, communication skills, and flexibility as they build confidence in math. There's also a very robust family component. So with all of the new math currently, I feel like it's very challenging as adults, to at least for me, to shift my mindset to this new way of teaching math. And the Apply book that comes with this program is so wonderful in helping bridge that gap between that family and home connection to school. The three components of that is there's kind of an overview of what the students are learning that you'll see in the book that comes home. There's Practice Partners is what it's called, and that shows examples of how to solve the problems in addition to kind of what the thinking or rationale is behind the steps you're taking. And then, of course, additional practice, which is going to mirror like your similar homework that we have now.
Each lesson starts with fact fluency, which is really great because it provides students structure of what their everyday routine will look like. It gives students the opportunity to quickly recall addition, subtraction, multiplication, and division facts through conceptual learning, fact strategies, and memorization. This also provides students a time to use math talk as they verbalize their thinking on which method they used and how they got to their answer. The textbook is also very nicely structured as it allows for differentiation as problems get more challenging as it gets later on in the book.
You've heard others talk about math talks, and that's one of the reasons I like the program. It had a lot of strong math talks. And what that does is allows children to hear each other's ideas, and it confirms their ideas, but it also gives them more to think about. And it's really great that they hear each other's voices in math. I think that's really an important part of the program. It allows them to use language and the vocabulary and to hear each other. I think that's so important. And each of the lessons start with the concrete pictorial abstract model, which is the same model we use for Singapore math right now. And it helps children with their, they're able to see and feel and manipulate things in order to help them with their, with their understanding. So it's like a multi, multiple opportunities for that.
Another great aspect of Eureka Math Squared is it provides instructional support for teachers to help them sequence information, scaffold content, and differentiate each lesson since there are so many different levels of students that are learning in each and every classroom. Also, Eureka Math Squared incorporates a vertically-aligned digital diagnostic assessment called EQUIP. Had to read that one too long. With the program recommendations for individualized learning for students, first through eighth grade. So it gears each lesson or each skill that the student is struggling with to help them develop other skills that there may be lacking.
Thank you so much to the team that was able to present the recommendations. I think their voice in this is very important. Each of the teachers sitting behind me were able to pilot this curriculum in their classrooms and teach lessons with our students. And I think that's really powerful to be able to say, gosh, this is the program that we need at this moment in time for, for Fairview students. And we're going to move on to the professional development. With any program that the board approves and that we adopt here at Fairview, professional development is crucial in the success of making sure that our staff are prepared, our students are prepared, and our parent community as well. So this spring, pending board approval, Fairview administrators, Mr. Lopaca and myself, along with Ms. Hoffman, would be taking a lead professional development course, which helps us as administrators be able to support our staff in how to implement this program, how to speak to our parent community about this program, how to help our students in the classroom with this program, especially from an instructional coach standpoint. And then this spring, pending approval, all of our kindergarten through eighth-grade math teachers would be participating in an in-person onsite professional development. We feel really strongly about the power of that in-person training rather than virtual. We've had so much done virtual over the course of the past couple of school years that the power of having an onsite trainer, we feel, would be profound in order for our teachers to make the most use of their time with this curriculum. If you flip on to the next page, I'm going to move on to the financial commitment. So as mentioned, the length of this adoption would be for four years, and we are recommending a four-year timeline on this. We feel like with any curriculum, that's a suitable amount of time. Your first year, you're really getting your feet wet. You're looking, you're trying to learn how to use the curriculum. Same with the second year, and then by the third and fourth year, you're really getting into a good groove with being able to see the progress the children are making year to year. If you look at the proposal, we have our estimated number of enrollment for next year going forward. I'd like to call out the piece for the ninth grade slash algebra. We do have students here at Fairview in middle school that are currently taking algebra through our middle school teaching math classes, that multiple level. So what that multiple level is, is it is an advanced or accelerated compacted curriculum for seventh and eighth grade. So it is two years compacted into one year's curriculum. Lisa Malik and Lauren Shadrav, two of our math teachers here, found this to be a highlight of this program. They've been looking for something like this to implement with our students, and they feel this would be a huge step in the right direction and able to hit our students who are ready for that multi-year into one year here at Fairview. You'll see the professional development. The launch PD is the PD that our staff would be participating in onsite this spring. The accelerate PD here is a PD that Ms. Hoffman just spoke about, the EQUIP Assessment Tool. So you'll look here at that online assessment. And what that EQUIP Assessment Tool is, is the diagnostic assessment tool, where our teachers will have access to pre-modular assessments along with assessment reporting, and it will be able to give us data and reports and pinpoint the different content and curriculum, I'm sorry, standards that our students are either not yet meeting or are ready to meet. And we feel this tool will be really helpful for all of our staff members who will be implementing this program. I'd also like to call out here that ESSR 3 Learning Loss Funding. So Dr. Whitaker and Mr. Fayer have written a grant, and this grant money was written reserved specifically for learning loss funding after the COVID-19 pandemic. So we are planning to use that a little over $200,000 to cover the cost of the program at a little around $164,000. That was a lot of information. I'm happy to answer any questions, myself, Dr. Whitaker, and our team. So are there any questions this evening? Anyone?
I, of course, have a comment. Great, because I always have a comment, but especially about curriculum. This kind of leads into our committee report, but the Education Technology Committee had the privilege to like hear about this and dive deep into it. And as usual, the Fairview staff surpasses any expectation of any public school anywhere. Congratulations. The document that was used to assess these curriculums was so intense and so specific. It was just fantastic. As an educator, I have zero doubt that you would have turned every page of this. You've played with every manipulative. You've looked at every assessment tool because for all curriculums, they went through a very elaborate rubric and gave detailed notes, and I just cannot fathom the time it took you all, so kudos. It was a huge team, and I think without a doubt, the Education Tech Committee definitely recommended it and felt very confident in moving forward. And then the clincher to have the ESSR funds available was like the awesome frosting on a cupcake. So well done. Thank you. Thank you.
I was just going to say the same or something similar, not quite as detailed because you were witness to much more detail being in the committee meeting than I was. But one thing I've seen consistently that we do at Fairview year after year, every time we're looking at new curriculum, is exactly what happened here. There are, what was it, something like 17 people altogether that were involved in this decision? Obviously, the people here speaking tonight were much more intently involved. But it wasn't just, certainly not a top-down dictation of curriculum. It was very much an involvement of every single person that is going to be connected with it. And, and that's the way we do it at Fairview because we're so small, we're so compact that we can actually do that kind of investment. And thank you very much to all the team for all the hard work that you did. It was excellent. And most importantly, it makes our job as a board pretty easy because we are very confident that every stone has been turned, and we are confident that you are confident in the recommendation that you're giving us. So thank you.
Okay, if there are no other questions, later on this evening, we will be asking the board to approve the recommendation for the curriculum adoption. So thank you for that. I'm going to segue quickly into my superintendent report for April. A few highlights. I've had the pleasure of conducting new board member orientation over the past two weeks. Very grateful to our new board members for freeing up about half a day each to come on in and start to learn the ins and outs of board membership. So that has been wonderful. We also had a visit from Representative Olakol. He is an individual who was recently elected to our state legislature, is a state legislator, but wanted to visit the schools within his district as he's starting to try to develop a relationship. And hopefully, you know, as he's considering things in Springfield, he will give us a call now that he knows us and ask for insight and opinion on different matters related to public schools. We have been working on filling vacancies with newly created positions. We posted the opportunity for staff members who might want to consider a transfer within the school. We call it an internal transfer. So we've been working through that as well as posting positions to external candidates and conducting interviews there. So we're well on our way to analyzing our staffing decisions for next year, which is very exciting. And then lastly, I'll give you a quick update on the building project. Construction is starting to wear thin on all of us. We're about nine, 10 months in, and the smells, the sounds, the sights. You know, our teachers have been wonderful sports. Kids have been fantastic. It almost doesn't seem to faze them anymore with steel beams coming in with a huge crane that has been pretty entertaining. So it will be a memory that they will carry with them for the rest of their lives. But for the neighborhood, it's been a lot, a lot of trucks, a lot of noise. You know, and we are grateful. We're grateful to their patience up until this time. We want to continue to work with them to sort out issues as they emerge. You may have noticed there's going to be a Skokie police officer posted in the mornings from about 4:30 a.m. until about 7:00 a.m., just to make sure that there are no workers getting here early, starting their work early, just to really monitor that there's no noise in the neighborhood before the posted work hours of 7:00 a.m. So we continue to work through those issues. The project's currently on pace to be finished on time, which is a relief. Hopefully, that stays the same. We've had a great winter in terms of weather, so things are moving along. It's a little deceiving from the outside. Inside, there is a lot happening. So we are looking forward to taking the board on a tour, one of these nice days coming up soon, so you can kind of see our progress so far. So I would be happy to answer any questions from anything contained within the report or what I just spoke of if the board has questions. Anyone?
That's great. Thanks very much for your report. So moving on to board committees and representatives, the first one I have on my list here is Buildings, Grounds, and Transportation. You have a report, Shereen?
I do. Jackie and I met with Jeff on April 18th, and we discussed the GSF contract. GSF, for those that don't know, is the committee or the company that does the cleaning in the building, and they were going to pass along a price increase for us. And so we discussed how to best manage that, if we should go out to bid, if we should, you know, negotiate at the time right now. So we've discussed that we would discuss, we will move forward with renewing for now and go forward after that. Anything you want to add, Jackie?
We said what, one year, and when preschool is, is up and running, we can reassess.
Right, and later this evening, we do have a one-year contract for the board to hear about. about. You know, we're, we're trying to be cautious about our commitment, knowing that we're adding a lot of square footage as well as the fact that much of the building will not need cleaning this summer because it'll be under construction. And so we don't want to pay for cleaning when it's not going to be happening. Jeff, did you have something that you wanted to add?
Yeah, the contract that we talked about at our Buildings and Grounds meeting was a full year where there wasn't any, the contract wasn't changed for those months that we wouldn't have people in the building. In the last, since that meeting, we've had talks with our cleaning company, just were able to negotiate a simple increase in July and August and then have that additional hire for the additional square footage, September through June. So there would be a savings in those first two months. We were talking about other things that we would need going into the next year, which would be, you know, with the timeline we have for opening the new section of the building, we would need them on board for assisting us in cleaning the building in an expedited fashion. From what our talk to their construction crew, you know, the cleaning done by the construction crew when they're done may not be up to our standard. So we need our teamwork with GSF to get that done the way we'd like it. I also mentioned to GSF the, our thoughts about having a one-year contract and then going out to bid after the new year. And he completely understood our position and also is confident that they would be able to retain our business and will continue moving, moving forward as if there would be a continued investment in Fairview as a long, as a long time partner. So it was a good discussion. Thank you both of you for the input that you had in that committee because it directed us in a way that I think is positive for the district moving forward.
Thank you. Great. Thanks for your port, Shereen. And next one on my list is the Ed Tech Committee. Do you have much to add? Have you already talked about the?
Yeah, the math curriculum. We, Deidre and I met with the committee, April 12th. The two things that I took notes on were that for at least one of our positions for the student success coordinator, we had over 150 applicants, which is fantastic. So we are a desired district for sure. And Cindy mentioned that she and Jordan are working on like a recruitment handbook for, you know, methodologies and connections in universities and organizations to continue to recruit from. I loved that a bunch of our Niles West kids came. I know NTDSC is doing the same thing. So that pipeline is outstanding. But yeah, otherwise the math curriculum was the big nugget.
Great. Thank you. Ed Redd is me. I wasn't able to attend the meeting on April 14th, but I can report something about what Ed Redd is, is up to at the moment. Most recently, they testified in front of the House Appropriations Committee with Representative Fred Crespo and Dr. Michael Colony from District 211. And that was about securing funds for schools that have had the new student arrivals like we did because of the high additional costs that come with that. These discussions that they're having aren't subject to the committee deadlines, so they're able to be continuing. And so Bridgette Edred is working hard on that. She is now presenting next week with the Latino Unity, Unity Days in Springfield. So working with the Latino Caucus on the same issue. In legislation generally, things are moving because there are committee deadlines this week. So things start to get wrapped up. They, Edred put out an action alert to the districts just last week because there is a bill progressing which would reduce the probationary period for teachers from four years down to three. Edred has some concerns with that. It did pass out of committee, but they are renewing, Edred renewing their efforts in, in the House to, to halt that and will actually be putting out probably another action alert soon. The kosher halal bill, which for those who are unaware, which would require schools to provide kosher and halal meals in school. They're also working on that, but the conditions of that and the, the complications of being able to provide that is, is really the problem. It hasn't really been thought through. So they're hoping to kind of stall it and rethink the whole thing. That one's less relevant to us. One thing to mention to the rest of the board and the new board members that will be joining is there will be a legislative, legislative session wrap-up on Wednesday, May 24th at six o'clock. It's a virtual meeting. So the information will be sent out from Edred for all board members and administrators to join the meeting and they will provide a wrap-up before the legislative action that's happened this spring, since session is adjourning on May 19th. The other thing that's happening is on Monday, May 1st at three o'clock, our representative in this area, Ron Gallowellam, is doing kind of like a, an online discussion, town hall type thing with, with school districts. And that would be to discuss some of the things that he is working on at the moment. So that's about it. But I would encourage the board members to tune into that session on May 24th to get a wrap-up of everything that happened this spring because I think that'd be a really good introduction for the new board members of what Edred does and also give you a wrap-up of what's coming down the pipe that will affect our schools. And I will mention this now, that we will be providing the names and email addresses of all the new board members to Edred because they are looking to collect all those now. They know that this is the change over time when there are new board members coming on. So they very much want to collect those email addresses so that they can keep the new board members up to date with, with what they're working on. So that's me. NTDSC, Nora?
Yep. So I went to the NTDSC DSC meeting, April 13th. The big updates are that they're getting ready for staffing next year, just like here. They're in contract negotiations with their teachers. Everything is going smoothly. They are doing their cultural test for families on April 27th from 5:30 to 7:30. And the interesting element that came out of this one was similar to what we were just talking about is that they are working hard to recruit paraprofessionals to then become teachers. So again, that pipeline of bringing educators in who know your school. So there's funding available for a lot of their paraprofessionals who are interested in getting certified, going to school, and then they can work at NTDSC in a classroom, which is really ideal. So wonderful things. The building's amazing and the administration is really outstanding and they're very grateful for our support and membership.
Great. Thank you. Next item is Freedom of Information requests. And I can report that there were two Freedom of Information Act requests received since the last board meeting and that they were handled appropriately. Information and correspondence, Mr. Secretary?
I, there were no items received this month.
Okay. So next item is public comment. At this time, I would like to invite the members of the audience to address the board in public comment. If you wish to address the board, if you could please come to the microphone, state your name and a three-minute time limit will be set. Are there any public comments this evening?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sochi Lionback and I currently have one student here at Fairview. He's a first reader. And I wanted to say that I attended two brand-new events very recently. The first one being the spin-out presentation.
Excuse me, I don't want to interrupt. Could you talk a little bit closer to the microphone so I can hear you? Like this?
That's perfect. Thank you. I didn't want to shout out you guys. I attended the two brand-new things at Fairview, the presentation for the spin-out program, which was, has always, I think, been a part of the school. And one of my kids have already been through it, but it was so great to see the criteria that goes into how our kids are put in the program or how they're selected or even some of the testing information. The amount of time that Mr. Connor and Ms. Tony and everyone else put together for this presentation absolutely showed. And it was so informative. And while I think there could have been more people in the audience that I'm glad that we're putting it out for everyone to see virtually, but it was such a great piece of work, so well put together and really shows how hard our teachers are working to make sure our students are placed in the right time. So thank you for that. And also our STEM night, Mr. Lays, brand new. You would have thought this well-run evening for families had been going on for many years. Not only was it for just about every grade, but so many families attended. It was so well-run. And having been at many other events, they can become chaotic with so many kids. This was absolute fun. This was so well-done. It had just, it was seamless. It was so great to hear and have your child explain to you what goes on in their STEM class. Like, hey, I use this. This is how I use it. It was just amazing to hear from our kids, the wonderful things that they're doing in their classroom and be able to show it to us. The fact that our teachers put in so much time in these extra events. And I mean, they're here this evening. It's just, it really does show. So I wanted to say thank you so much.
Thirty seconds.
Yeah. Thank you so much. It really shows. And we really appreciate these two new events. They were greatly done.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anybody else want to make a comment this evening? Okay. I can confirm that there were no online comments submitted this evening either. Okay, so our action items. We first of all have a consent agenda, can I have a motion? And a second to adopt the resolution reaffirming the transportation hazardous areas and accept the results of the board election for April, of April 24th, 2023. Okay. Is there any other information with this? The hazard areas is something we confirm every year, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And the election results are what they are? Correct. Okay. In that case, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The consent agenda is approved. Next action item is to, can I have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation of the, to adopt the K4 math curriculum that was presented to us this evening? Can I have a second?
One second.
Okay. We've had our presentation. Is there any final questions for anyone? Any lingering thoughts? Okay. In that case, can Secretary please call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Bujdi?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Diakakis? Ms. Downing? Ms. Gulliana?
Yes.
Ms. Lenoine?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Excellent. Congratulations on your presentation. Your math curriculum is in place. Next is, can I have a motion and a second to approve the extension of the maintenance contract with GSF? Our motion?
A second.
Okay. Again, any questions regarding this? Is there anything you needed to add, Jeff? Or we're good? Anybody got any questions? Okay. In that case, could the secretary please call the roll?
Yes, I vote yes. Ms. Lenoine?
Yes.
Mr. Gulliana?
Yes.
Ms. Downing? Ms. Diakakis?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Bujdi?
Yes.
Okay. And next item is to approve the insurance committee plan design change recommendation. Approve insurance committee plan design change recommendation effective 2022 to 2024. Can I have a motion second?
Come on.
A second.
Okay. I think we need an explanation for that. It's a long sentence.
Okay. First, let me thank the Insurance and Wellness Committee. I know Ms. Ogenorf is here tonight with her expertise in insurance for being part of this. So the Insurance and Wellness Committee was originally conceived almost 10 years ago as an effort to mitigate insurance increases that were seen at the, on the employee insurance plan. Luckily, over that time, it's morphed into two, it's morphed into a discussion area for insurance plans, but also a wellness committee, which has been fantastic in providing events for our, for our staff. Over the course of the last two, two years, we've seen huge increases in our insurance plan, even though we're part of a cooperative due to some of the elements of our plan. Because of the way contracts are structured with our employees, we needed to bring a recommendation to the board at the insurance wellness committee level as a recommendation from that committee to the board in order to make changes to that structure. Right now, because of costs and an effort to limit costs going forward is on premium basis for employees next year, but also mitigate future increases, we are recommending to the board on changing in our PPO family plan are deductible to $1,000 and then moving the out-of-pocket to $2,000. We had a very rich plan for our employees, which we are truly grateful for. However, at this time, in order to mitigate some of those increases, we're going to change the deductible and out-of-pocket, we're proposing to change deductible out-of-pocket. Nothing will change for our HMO, nothing will change for our PPO single. We saw 13.6% increase this past year. This change will knock it down to 10.2. Still, the market for insurance right now is, is crazy. But due to the riches of our plan, our claims were exceeding the amount of premiums we were paying. We're hoping that this change will limit increases in the future. That was the real brief version of it, but the poor staff had to sit through a much longer version of it.
I'm sure there was much more discussion.
But again, thank you to the group who did a lot of analysis and a lot of work in making this recommendation. And thank you to the openness of those employees that were involved in the decision-making.
Does anybody have any questions? Okay. In that case, could the secretary please call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Bujdi?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Diakakis?
Yes.
Ms. Downing? Ms. Gulliana?
Yes.
Ms. Lenoine?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Thank you for your work on that, too. Seems like you've all been very busy with lots of numbers and crunching and that's kind of what you do.
I think it's my job. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay. Next item, can I have a motion and a second to approve the non-tenure contracts for 2023, 2024?
So moved.
A second.
Is there any further discussion on this one?
We discussed this last month, so I don't, there's any further comment?
No other questions? Okay. In that case, could the secretary please call the roll?
Yes, I vote yes. Ms. Lenoine?
Yes.
Mr. Gulliana?
Yes.
Ms. Downing? Ms. Diakakis?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
And Ms. Bujdi?
Yes.
Okay. And finally, we've got a lot of business this evening. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the part-time teacher contracts for 2023 to 2024?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. And again, this was all discussed last month. Any other questions? Okay. If the secretary could please take, call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Downing? Ms. Gulliana?
Yes.
Ms. Lenoine?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Bujdi?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Diakakis?
Yes.
Okay. Next item is items for future consideration. Does anybody have any items for future consideration? You won't be here. We're all here. We're all good?
No.
Okay. So next is the recognition of retiring board members.
Yes. So as you all know, we have four board members who will be retiring this evening. And I wanted to invite Nick Connor to come on up to help me out with this. We speak as a team, administration and teachers. And we want to just start out by thanking Nora, Shereen and Erin for your years of service on the board.
Trying to talk loud. We are just so appreciative of the ongoing support that you've provided. You've supported our ideas. That's how we continue to innovate and improve our craft. And I can just think of countless examples where I've come to the board, people have come and asked, hey, can we try this? How about this? How about that? hey, can we try this? How about this? How about that? So your commitment to helping us continually be better for our students has been second to none. So thank you so much.
I just want to really reiterate what Dr. Vittit said. Um, the teachers will support the board in the power to come through this last cycle. And we want to express our gratitude. One of the things you get to hear about at these extremely interesting board meetings every month that I present everybody constitutionally. Wouldn't be possible without support. So we have our gratitude. Thank you so much. Um, the teachers of the board, you've been doing a great work.
And I'll hand the mic over to Mr. Gulliana, who's going to speak on behalf of Mary Ann Brown.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to start by thanking Mary Ann Brown for her years of service and her contributions to the Fairview South School and the Fairview Community. As a parent of Fairview alumni, Mary Ann has consistently demonstrated her unwavering dedication to the betterment of our school. Throughout the years, when her children attended Fairview South School, Mary Ann actively participated in a variety of influential roles on the Fairview PTA. She served as the Chair of the Goals and Fundraising Committee, and later became the PTA President, where she introduced new initiatives, including movie nights, which continues to be a highly-attended PTA event. Mary Ann was known to continually go beyond expectations to help in improving the school experience for Fairview students and their families through the work of the Fairview PTA. After serving the community through her PTA role, Mary, Mary Ann continued her dedication to the community by running for and being elected to the Fairview District Seventy-two Board of, Board of Education in twenty-eleven. As a board member, she sought out professional development through I A S B to improve her understanding of the role of a board member. She was recognized by I A S B as master board member on numerous occasions. She has served as a member of the Executive Committee, most recently serving as President of the Board. Mary Ann has served on Board Negotiations Committee, as well as Buildings, Grounds, and Transportation Committee. Her efforts supported the approval of Fairview's current building project and future preschool program. Her contributions to the district are too many to list. Please join me in thanking her and wishing her well in her future endeavors.
Okay, you know me. I've got something to say. Thank you, everyone, for your applause and appreciation and, and your hugs, Bernadette and others. Today is actually quite a special day for me, um, for me and my husband. It's twenty-six years ago today that we moved to America. So, um, twenty-six years ago, there we were, at O'Hare, with seven pieces of luggage and a brand-new baby. And we had no idea that we would be here twenty-six years later. I'm certainly not sitting at this table. So we moved to this area in nineteen ninety-nine, and Rachel started kindergarten in two thousand and four, so it's twenty-one years that I've been involved in this school in all the different roles that Sargon mentioned. So many times, we talk about the Fairview family and just how much the school means to the community, and the Fairview family is right out there. Those are my PTA colleagues out there that came to say hello and goodbye this evening. There are former board members out there that came to say hello and goodbye. And that's Fairview family. That's what it means, you know? Some of them haven't set foot in the school for quite a few years, but they came back. I don't mean just for me. I mean, because this school means so much to them, and it's just really, really important. There is one other person that you all need to be grateful to, and that's my husband, Christopher. For many, many years, he was the breadwinner. I was at home with the children. It afforded me the time to be involved in Fairview and do all the things that I did. And he's been just my exceptional support. For all these years that we've been here, and especially the tricky times in the board meetings and so on, um, it's been rough at times, but, um, he's been my support, so you should thank him, too. Make sure you do on your way out. I, I will be back at different points. I, I can't say goodbye to Fairview, but, um, I really appreciate your support and your thanks this evening. It really means a lot to me. Thank you. Time for a change. So the next item this evening is to administer the oath of office to the newly-elected board members. Okay, so if the new board members could please, uh, just come out of, approach at the front here. We're good. So at this time, we just take your seats, and shortly we will go on the floor table. Okay. So, uh, at this time, we're going to have a brief reception honoring our retiring board members and welcoming our new board members. And, uh, so at this time, I am adjourning the meeting, C N D A, to be continued with the new board sitting at the table in about fifteen minutes. Okay.
So, call, call to order, I'm calling to order the reorganizational meeting of the Fairview District Seventy-two Board of Education. It's April twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three, at eight twenty-eight P M. Um, I'll call roll to determine if we have a quorum. Diana Diakakis.
Yes.
Jackie Bujdi.
Yes.
Uh, Christine Sorica.
No, we need Christine.
Uh, Raphael Kavor.
Yes.
Sage Philip. Yes. Estera Tumana.
Yes.
And I am here. So first, we, we will appoint, uh, do the appointment of President Pro Tempora. By consensus of the board, we'll appoint a President Pro Tempora. Like, next, we will do the election of the officers. As established in board policy, the Office of President, Vice President, and Secretary are terms of two years. Elections will be held in the order of President, Vice President, and then Secretary. Nomination of candidates can be made by the candidate himself or another board member. Nominations of candidates for the offices do not need to be seconded. A motion to close the nominations, though, does require a second and a voice vote. Dr. Whitaker will keep the record. Voting for candidates for office must be conducted verbally. If more than one person is nominated, a roll-call vote will be conducted for each candidate in the order of nomination. Voting continues until a member receives majority of the votes cast. The Office of President is elected first. Upon conclusion of the election of President, the newly-elected president removes, resumes the direction of the meeting, and conducts the election of the Vice President-Secretary. Is everybody okay with me taking the role of President Pro Tempora?
Yes.
Okay. So we will start with the nomination of President. Do we have any nominations for President? I nominate Diana Diakakis. Is there any other nominations? Okay, let's take a roll-call vote on this. Christine? Vote.
Yes.
Raphael?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Esther? Sage? Yes. And I vote yes, and, uh, Diana?
Congratulations.
All right. I held this long enough.
Um, we'll move on to nominations of Vice President. Anyone have any nominations that they would like to ask or say? Sargon, Gulliana? Yes, it's for Sargon.
So, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, Sargon, you continue as Vice President.
Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, we will do Secretary. Any nominations for Secretary?
I nominate Jackie Bujdi.
Yes, for Jackie.
Yes.
Yes.
Everyone, yes?
All right, Jackie?
Yes.
You're Secretary. All right, we're going to move, um, to discuss the interest in committees and representatives. The newly-elected president appoints members of the board to serve on standing committees of the board as established in policy number two-one-five-zero. The President and Vice President are automatically members of the Executive Committee. It is recommended that the board members express interest in membership on standing committees and as representatives of the district on standing organizations. The appointment for these positions will take place at the regular meeting on Wednesday, May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three. So at this moment, I'm going to ask each of you, um, your interest in any of the, um, committees. We have the Education Technology Committee. We would need a chairperson and one member. Finance Personnel Committee, chairperson and one member. Building, Grounds, and Transportation, chairperson and one member.
I would like to be, uh, on the Finance Committee, and as a backup, I would be on the Building and Grounds Transportation.
Jackie?
I'd like to, um, be on the Building and Grounds Transportation and as a backup, be on, uh, Education.
Sage?
I'll be ready for, uh, Technology and Finance Backup.
Aster? Education and Technology. And as a backup, um, Ed Redd. We'll get to those next, um, is.
Do you have a second choice for?
Yes, grounds and transportation.
So, so each of these, uh, just before we get to you, um, each of these committees of the board have two board members on each of the committees. So, uh, following this evening, Diana will have to think about, you know, who she wants to assign to each committee. So that's why it's important for us to have two options, um, just in case your first choice doesn't work out that way.
So first choice Building, Grounds, and Transportation, second choice Finance.
Christine?
First choice Education, Technology, second choice Building, Grounds, and Transportation.
Okay, the next, um, item, we will talk about representatives to committees and organizations. We have four. Um, N T D S C Board will be one representative and one alternate. The meetings are held monthly. I, I A S B, one representative attend dinner meetings two times a year and to serve as the board's delegate at the annual conference. PTA Liaison, one representative and one alternate to attend monthly general and executive PTA meetings. And Ed Redd, one representative who attends the monthly member meetings during legislative season, annual kickoff luncheon, and the annual dinner meeting. Sargon, any interest?
And I'd have to check my schedule by this time. I'll let you know.
Okay, Jackie? Ed Redd? You help out? I can be a backup if something else doesn't. Sage? Any interest? You can, if, if, we don't need to discuss this at this moment. If you want to look into it and let me know via email, that would be fine, too.
Okay.
Does that work for everybody, or does somebody have an interest? Do you have an interest?
Yeah, PTA Lia, PTA Liaison is.
Would be an interest.
Or myself, um, you can put me first for, uh, Ed Redd, and second option, I A S B.
Aster? Ed Redd, please.
I could do the I A S B as well.
Sage, do you want to look into it and give me? That's okay. Okay, perfect. All right, walking along. Appointment of Recording Secretary. It is recommend, it is recommended that Ms. Drew Sabres, if I pronounced it correctly, be appointed to continue her role as Recording Secretary for the Board of Education with remuneration and reimbursement for expenses incurred in connection with the execution of her duties as per Board Policy two-one-one-zero. Can I have a motion and a second to approve that Ms. Drew be appointed to continue her role as Recording Secretary for the Board of Education?
So moved.
I'll second. Um, Secretary, can you please roll call? Sage?
Oh, yes.
Estella? Esther? Yes. Sargon?
Yes.
Jackie A C S? Diana?
Yes.
Raphael?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
All right, Drew is continuing as our Recording Secretary. All right, um, establish regular meeting dates, time, and. All right, establish regular meeting dates, time and place. The school board is required to establish the dates, time, and place for the regular meetings. A voice vote is sufficient to establish the regular meeting arrangements. The dates are publicized in the local newspaper as a legal notice. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the dates, time, and place for the regular board meeting?
So moved.
Second.
So in your packet, we continue the pattern of meeting on Wednesdays. Typically, the regular meeting starts at seven P M. with closed session just before the regular meeting. So we are recommending that we stay with those Wednesdays, but certainly, we can always amend that calendar, you know, if something were to come up and board members all had, you know, a conflict at the same date. But, you know, we could also consider another day of the week if that was something that the board wanted to consider. For tonight's purposes, we just continued with the same pattern that had already been established. So it's entirely up to you, but at this point, we're but forth calendar of the Wednesday meetings.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, goes again, say nay. All right, thank you. Finally, public comments. At this time, I'd like to invite members of the audience to address the board in public comment. If anyone has public comment, they can come up. Okay. Can I have a motion and a second to adjourn the regular meeting of the Fairview Board of Education at eight forty P M?
So moved.
Second. Right, will the secretary please call a roll call vote? Sargon Guliana?
Yes.
Sage Philip?
Yes.
Esther Tumara?
Yes.
Diana Diakakis?
Yes.
Raphael Kavor?
Yes.
Christine Sorjka?
Yes.
Jacqueline Boojdi?
Yes.
Thank you. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.